Again, recording of our regular monthly meeting with the board being present. The meeting was called in order at six P M. tonight, and we immediately convened an executive session to discuss immigrant students and point at history of particular persons in agreement, negotiations with the superintendent. At this time, I would like to call for a motion and a second to end the executive session and return to the open session. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell. Mr. Peters. All in favor? Aye. The motion is carried. Representatives?
Representatives of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Berry? Ms. Paul Davies?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
And Ms. Robert Marrow, may we speak? Okay. And motion to approve the agenda as written, and we have, in addition to E., or Allison Rosenbaum, physician, appointment, and compensation protection for Amber Arnold. Read all the rest of it, Sharon?
Ah, yes, please, the public has a problem.
Okay. Nobody has it? Okay, Rosenbaum is permanently certified in the school council area, hereby appointed to be physician of one F T E. school counselor in the school council tenure area. Probation year, January commencing March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, we anticipate to end on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-nine. Compensation will be seventy-eight thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars, step seventeen, all four, bachelor's plus seventy-two, program, to replace the value. Amber Arnold, compensation will replace, oh, T B D., with forty-five dollar ninety-one cents per hour. And then possibly new business on number ten, we have to talk about the group that is using our facility this weekend. No, it's no doubt. Okay? So, we have approval, we have approval of that, as written. Motion to approve the minutes of January fourteenth, thirty-one, three, meeting, as written and recorded, including Mason Marrow's dates.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell. Ms. Paul Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
Close motion carried. I didn't have anything on, you know, where, nobody signed up, even on the comment?
I got it.
Okay. And, Mr. Councilor, yeah?
Grace?
Ms. Grace?
You've changed.
I joke with the students that I'm a professional high school student because I've been here for quite a while. But, they did prepare a statement, six students, people doing basketball, people doing other things, so here's their statement. Good evening, Mr. Storms, Board of Education and Administrators. Our high school student council has been working closely and diligently with administrators to create incentives for the building attendance initiative. We've come up with some great ideas that we believe will entice our entire student body. We are eager to see the positive impact it has on our building. Seniors are continuing to come up with ideas for more privileges and are working closely with our officers. Members and advisors hope to make these ideas a reality. Another agenda item for us is trying to make the school a bit more fun, whether it be an assembly, concert, athletic event, carnival, field day, et cetera. Many kids feel school just isn't as fun as it used to be. We hope to change that mindset, we'll work with administration to kind of come up with some fun school days for the spring months. Our thought is to try to do one day a month to get the entire high school to buy into it. Hopefully, in March, I'll have more information on this report. On behalf of Grace.
Turning up the fun factor.
And I think congratulations, too, to all the different things that have been happening with the students, be it music, be it arts, the athletics, just so many things that they've been doing, and congratulations to all of them. Load and group, right? Okay. Superintendent.
Yeah, so we're going to start off tonight. Mrs. Kelleher is here, she's going to do a presentation for, for us on immigrant students, and I had an opportunity to talk with her yesterday, so thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. So, so, good evening, my name is Jackie Kelleher, and I am an attorney for the school district. And with the new administration in Washington, there have been a number of changes. One of them is a stated policy to remove people who are not properly documented and are not citizens of the United States from the United States. The, people are concerned about what do we do if law enforcement officers would come to the school district and ask to serve a warrant or a subpoena, removing a child from school custody. So, you know, this goes back to some fundamental premises, and so I've been working with the district administration to put together a plan for what to do if this were to happen. And, you know, no, law enforcement won't come and knock on Mr. Storms' door, no, they'll go and ring the doorbell over at the high school, which is how I get in the building, and then they're talking to people who, you know, might not have a whole lot of information. So, the number one thing we are working on is communication, so that anybody who may encounter someone in law enforcement, particularly immigration, would know what to do. So, one of the things we've designed, and I admit, I totally stole it from something that was developed by the New York State Hospital Association, but this is a flowchart for school employees if immigration authorities come to the school district. Quite frankly, it's also a useful tool to consider for other law enforcement. So, you know, this is walking through the steps, you know, an ICE agent comes to the school district, the person who lets them in would ask to see their identification, and if possible, obtain a business card, and then ask the agent to step into the office. It is not the responsibility of the person who's, you know, greeting, you know, people and, you know, secretaries and administrative assistants in these offices to handle the situation. What they're going to do is contact their administrator. And at that point, it goes into the hands of administrators. The reason that we say put the law enforcement person into the principal's office, and I think there's something different at the intermediate school because of the way it's set up, but that is so that everybody else is doing their normal business at the school, parents coming in to pick up a kid, kids coming in late if it's high school, all of those things, that they're not looking at a fully armed person, you know, sitting there. And it also takes some pressure off of the people working in that office, so that they don't have, like, getting the hairy eyeball from law enforcement. And so, you know, again, they, so really, once the person steps into the office, it's all going to move to administration. Administrator is going to talk to them, ask for any documents, and again, you know, if they have any documents, if they want to remove a child from the district, they, what the protocol is going to be is call the district's lawyer. The district's lawyer, first lawyer, isn't available, call the second lawyer, call the third law firm, because, you know, in this day and age, districts work with various law firms, and every law firm that this district works with, you know, people practice school law, and they will be able to assist. Now, we have also provided a, sort of a simplified list, again, what to do, and I like to think of, what was that show, Survivor? You know, this is sort of like your lifeline, you know, because if someone comes in and law enforcement and says, I would need to, I want to get information about Jackie Kelleher, or I need to get Jackie Kelleher right here, right now, her parents have been taken into custody, and we need to take her into custody, I mean, I'm a sixty-year-old lawyer, I would be flustered. And so, that's why I like to have a tool like this, which is a lifeline, that the person can go and say, okay, I know we did some training on this, I know we talked about it, what do I do? And, and it's brightly colored, different colors than the hospital association used, so it can't be plagiarism. They had much more purple and blue on it. But, you know, so that's part of it, and then I don't know how to get to the other document.
Just arrow over on the keyboard.
Okay, and so this, this gives a little bit of information about the different types of documents you might be looking at. Again, this is going to be more administrative than something that the, the people who are letting the enforcement people in initially. And then this is, again, you know, a lot of people have, you know, different experiences and different thoughts on, you know, the changes that are going on politically, and so I think it's important, too, that we've put together a document that, you know, provides sort of a common basis of understanding. So, you know, again, this is your second lifeline, this is your phone a friend, phone an attorney, you know? So, so again, this is another simple document, what to do if law enforcement seeks information about students, including immigrants, they might not be showing up and saying, I need Jackie Kelleher to come with me today, but they may show up and say, hey, I need information on Jackie Kelleher and her parents and her siblings and the people that all live in the house with her, and, you know, I've got this document, and it says, I can see this information. So, again, you know, you contact your designated administrator, ask to see an I D., make a copy, ask the law enforcement official to wait in the designated area, and do not provide any family or student information. And then at points four and five, I think, help people to understand why they're being asked to do what they're doing. So, number four, and, and, you know, this is a U.S. Supreme Court decision from nineteen seventy-one, a Texas school district was denying the immigrant children the right to go to school, and basically, the Supreme Court's, it's court cases called Plyler versus Doe, and they said that, you know, student, even students who are undocumented, even students who are in the country illegally have a due process right to be educated. And their practical argument for this is not only do they have this right, but these people are likely to live their whole lives in this country, and we want them educated. It makes no sense not to educate somebody who's going to be a member of our society most likely for the rest of their lives. So, I'm shocked it's still good law in this country, but again, I think it's important that even people who think that, you know, people should, you know, come into this country legally, and people who don't have the right documentation shouldn't be in this country, this tells everybody, it's the U.S. Supreme Court that says these kids get an education. This isn't, you know, a political thing, it's something that the country has been, you know, doing for, you know, over fifty years now. And then the other one, and this is a reminder for all law enforcement, remember that the state education department says that law enforcement officers may not remove a student from school property or interrogate a student on school property without the consent of student's parent or guardian, except in emergency circumstances. Providing deportation documents does not meet the standard of emergency circumstances. You know, emergency circumstances are weapons that have been reported to be in school, active drug activity, that type of stuff, I mean, these, these immigration officers can sit in the principal's office and wait and talk and serve their, you know, see what they can do with their paperwork, and wait for the lawyer to be called. You're never really going to have an immigration emergency, you know, related to a subpoena or a warrant. So, we also provided with this, just a copy of a, what a United States District Court search and seizure warrant looks like, this is going to be signed by a federal judge. Again, we don't want anybody in this building interpreting what these are, we want everybody in this building to be calling a lawyer to get a legal opinion on these. But again, it's a level of comfort, you know, if you've never seen a subpoena, a warrant, you know, and you don't know court, administrative, it doesn't make sense to you. So, we just wanted to put these documents in to give people a little bit more familiarity, a little bit more confidence if that day comes here. This is the back page of it. And then now, this is a Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Customs Enforcement warrant of removal and deportation, and then the another, the next one is a, again, Department of Homeland Security warrant for arrest of alien. And if you go through the flowchart, you would see that these are probably not enforceable on the school district property, the only one that would likely be enforceable would be the federal district court subpoena, but again, not decisions that should be made here, but the, the idea is really to get people to understand why the rules are what they are, and, you know, let's walk through what's going to happen. So, the administrative team has been working on this, talking through it, and it's going to be rolled out to the community, the school community in the next few days. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts that they'd like to share?
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, and, and good luck with it.
Her phone number will be out.
He answers emails very quickly, too.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we have the rest of my reports, and we've got some things to, I think some really good things happening across the district. As you saw, not only the parent square, also the newspaper, we're getting ready for the Hall of Fame, and so there's opportunity to get applications in for the Hall of Fame by March fourteenth. So, we did realize that, you know, we have a person called today, I think, send out that parent square, concerned they couldn't get into it, and it's only a temporary problem with the link, but we went back to it later, so everything's supposed to be fine with it there. And so, hopefully, we'll get some more people that are interested, and that's a good way of getting it out, so it's on Facebook, it's on the newspapers, and we'll also put it out in the parents' square for a while.
I was here at a game, and there were some parents looking at it on the hallway, and they said, oh, are these all administrators? I said, no one knows are community members, and oh, that is wonderful, so it's appreciated when people come and take a look at it.
And it's looked so good up there, yeah, so. The other thing I mentioned to our Board of Education in our update was that we went through our, some steps of our process for special education, and our school, our school was a school that was targeted, is a area that we looked into, and so as a school district, we've been going through the process, and I think the important thing was on January twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, our secondary and elementary buildings were visited by CEQA, which is a state education program. State Education Department here, up in the country, and their representative observed twenty students, I E Ps, in their classrooms, and on all sides of campus, and we are able to, we're modeling those I E Ps, everything we, we did well in that section of the unit. And I think one of the things that is probably the most daunting for us as a school district, or probably all school districts, is the, the need for our students to have functional behavior assessments and behavior plans created, especially for disabilities, in the event that they were going to be, or needed, had a problem at school, or need to be suspended from school, we have to, really, there's no regulations around whether we could suspend them, and the amount of time they could be out, and that's a concern we have right now, so we're working on that as a leadership team, trying to figure out, we all today spent, went through professional development, so I'd like to, I'll say that to you, and we're learning as we go. So, I think it's a really good news, knowing that our teachers are able to implement I E Ps well, we did a great job with all of that, and the instruction, what is matching what, what we're supposed to be, which is great. There's exciting things happening, and we've found, briefly mentioned it, we have things happening across the entire district in a lot of different areas. So, the music department, we had a lot of things happen in the fall, but January, I'll go from January forward for you, January twenty-second, we have the elementary concert, February, we had the Hall County Music Festival here, several cruise students were selected to participate, the county honors ensemble, and we hosted a hundred movie streams here in our school, so it was a very busy place, but kudos to our statue, we did a great job with that. In March, from our seventh through ninth, we have the NISBA Symphonic statewide honors concert band, and we have one high school member selected to participate in a statewide honors band. Also, the twentieth and twenty-second, we have our spring musical into the woods, and I want to let everyone know that Tilda reported this earlier in one of my reports, too, and stopped in to speak with Mrs. Shilt the other night, and the kids were having, they were so, all, they had such great smiles on, and they were really into it, and it was great to see all that, that energy that they had that night, and one of the students kind of bellowed out, let me know that our drama club is bad, Mr. Storm, so I think that was a good, that was really a positive thing. We have the Peak Festival, we have Northeastern Clinton Central School in April, and then we also have Kevin Burke coming to Purdue Central School again, so we've got a lot of things happening in the music world. We also have sports highlights, I think those are important also to talk about, the boys in our track team, our tournament, C D A C, sectional championships, a fantastic achievement. The Asable Valley, or Asable Valley Boy Swim Team, they were maybe through section, won a sectional championship this past weekend. And then the wrestling team, y'all heard about that, the wrestling team, they went to Syracuse, they had a quite a great send-off, and it was very exciting, a lot of parents were here, and the whole school stood in the hallway to wish them well, which was very exciting. Bowling, we have the sectionals coming up Thursday the thirteenth, the North Bowl, wrestling sectionals will be held Saturday, February fifteenth, at Asable Valley, other, I'm sure it's still going to happen, but I'm saying it's going to, the weather could be interesting. varsity cheer, we have that going on, sectionals, Sunday, February sixteenth, at the Field House. So, we definitely have a lot of things going on. One of the things that we're doing, I think it's really, really been a plus for our staff, one of the, our, our staff, through our negotiations that we're with P A T., we were able to come up with six hours of professional development opportunities for teachers, it's part of the, part of their contract, and one of those hours is for open house, but they, we actually have been doing a, doing strategies this year, effective teaching strategies, trying to have a, a consistent effective teaching strategies across the district, and I have to say, administrators are doing a spectacular job in providing that training for our teachers. Tonight was one, so we had explicit instruction was one of them, so Casey, you might tell us a little bit about explicit instruction, although they have a cover of explicit instruction.
Yeah, so, explicit direct instruction, when you think about it, as teaching throughout the year, is no longer just a lecture style of teaching, it's carefully planned activities throughout a lesson. They introduced a new acronym to teachers, it's ATLAS, so it stands for Attention, Transition, Lesson Activity and Summation. So, I think back to my teacher ed. program, and we had these ten-page lessons planned with, you know, an opening event, it's before you set in your activity, and closing, this is condensing it down into some really easy strategies for teachers. When I was going around and talking to our different grade levels and departments, one of the biggest takeaways was tying a motion to their lessons and really ingraining that into their education. One table was talking about a lesson on adding subtracting decimals, and they introduced it by walking in with a button-down shirt that was misaligned, and how that, you know, they really looked silly, and the kids really thought that was great, but it really drove home the understanding that the decimals need to be lined up, and that's something that these children are going to remember for years to come, and that's what explicit instruction is about.
Thank you very much. And then the other strategy that was covered tonight was vocabulary strategy, was a vocabulary strategy, so will you share with us a little bit about what you talked about there?
Sure. So, if you remember back to when all of you happened to learn vocabulary, it was like, here's your dictionary, here's the word, write the entire definition, possibly the part of speech, write, memorize it, and then that was basically it, so you, that's how you were taught. So, vocabulary is very different now, and as a leadership team, when we were choosing which strategies to go over, this one is probably the one that is most important, just because all achievement gaps, per the, the little audio that we listen to when we teach it, says that all achievement gaps really stem from vocabulary. So, a couple of quick statistics that are in that audio is that if a child is from a wealthy family, by the age of three, they probably know eleven hundred words. If they are from a middle-class family, they probably know seven hundred and fifty words, and then our lower-income families know about five hundred and twenty-five words. So, if you think about that, the importance of bringing vocabulary in to kind of close these gaps. So, it's also all about, the, the strategy is about making sure that there's no comprehension without picturing, so it's encouraging teachers to create short word, or short definitions of words now, that kids could even, like, choral read when they're doing them as a group, and then also associating a picture, and we're not just talking about, like, they draw some random picture they'll never remember, like, looking up pictures, figuring out what fits best with it, because vocabulary is in all disciplines. As a group, when they were doing Think Pair Share, which was the last one we did, they also just spoke about the different ways that they can use it within their disciplines, and then they, when we had conversation about it, how they could cross it, even, like, via sports, Ryan O'Connell was bringing up how he now puts pictures with the football players, because they seem to memorize different definitions or different words within football. So, it does, it's not just in our classroom, it's, it's really just building vocabulary for students for life, so it doesn't really matter where you put it, it ends up building all sorts of building blocks for the rest of the class.
Thank you very much for sharing, so those strategies that Karen and Casey talked about tonight, all the leadership team members are part of that presentation, they all did a great job doing that, and we're moving through these strategies at the same time across the district, so I think that's a real plus, so our educational leaders are talking about it, and then the other, one of the last thing in mind was the reports, so it's kind of a mix, it goes from this one to our next, next topic, and then board agenda, but we have our mid-year goals, in progress towards our goals, and that's really important. And so each one of the administrators, instead of doing a presentation on that, what they've done is they did a report for you, so we have one reporter that talks about things we're doing across the district, that includes myself, and Chana, and Nick, and Rachel, and then each one of the buildings as well, so those are there for you, if there's any questions you have, and then we'll be coming back around later on in the school year to talk about our progress in those areas as well. Does anybody have any questions about any of those?
No, it was nice to see the connection and just the listing, that's, keeping it simple.
Communication piece that was in there, too, our communication role, you see in the district, when it's a link, and thank you to Mr. Dean County for creating that first, so it was a great, great job by our leadership team.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I've got.
Okay. There you go.
I'll keep it short today, I know we're all anxiously waiting Kara's budget presentation, so, but with that, with that coming up, and I know budget season coming up, you know, I know in conversations with Mr. Storms, we, the forecast is not great for our financial, you know, standing right now, and I know I make this request every year, and Mr. Storms and Kara have been great about it, and, and working with P A T. to have discussions, especially with those P A T. members who may be affected by any possible reductions, and I just would, you know, make that same request again this year, so that we can keep people informed, and we can also use some of the resources we have available through New York State United Teachers to help those people who, who may be affected. So, I appreciate your working with us in that, in that sense. And then the last thing I have, Mr. Storms, the weather forecast, Wednesday night and Thursday, just think about it.
The best part is you don't have to worry, because every high school student has found it, like, if you don't, give us a snowbaker.
Thank you.
It was a literacy base, come on, it's nicer. I do, you know, I do want to go back, though, to all those progress reports and the administration reports, they were very comprehensive, very easy to read, and appreciate that, thank you. Hey, here we go.
Welcome, everyone, to our second budget meeting of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget season. The agenda for tonight is preliminary budget information, so a quick review of the current school year's budget, preliminary information for next year, a review of the New York State Executive Proposal. a review of the New York State Executive Proposal, and then also a review of the New York State Comptroller's Fiscal Stress Monitoring System. So what is, what is a school budget? A school budget is a complete financial plan for a 12-month period of time. It's a snapshot in time based on estimated expenditures and revenues. Each year, a school board in New York is required to prepare an annual budget, which when adopted becomes the basis for the tax law. So a quick review of the 24-25 budget, just over $54 million. The main expenditures, the costs of running Peru Central School are personnel-related salary and benefits and the majority of our state aid, of our revenues come from state aid and property taxes. So here's our development, our budget development timetable. We are really hoping for an enacted budget on April 1st this year. We'll see how that goes. So in terms of our guiding principles going into this budget season, we always start with a rollover budget with increases related to, you know, inflationary pressures and operations. We do evaluate budget proposals, the leadership team. And, you know, the superintendent will make a recommendation to the board and further discussions will be had at that level. Of course, we want to align our resources with our strategic plan and goals and balance programming with sustainability and the responsibility to our taxpayers. And as Mr. Marino shared, there is some uncertainty coming up with both state and federal funding levels. So that's another thing that we're keeping an eye on. So the New York State Executive Budget Proposal was released at the end of January. We did have a slight increase to the CPI factor from 24-25 and some of the Rockefeller Institute's recommendations were implemented. Most of them relate to the factors that go into the foundation aid formula, poverty rates, as well as free and reduced price lunch data. The other big thing that everyone was excited about, but, you know, excited and not, is that there's a minimum increase of 2% for all districts. So the, if you recall, last year there was discussion about eliminating the safe harmless provision, which means districts who were slated to receive less money, the safe harmless provision meant that they would not receive less money. They would always receive the same amount. Last year, that was proposed to be removed, so schools would actually be faced with reductions in state aid compared to the previous year. This year, the executive proposal includes a minimum increase of 2% for all districts. However, many districts, I would say all districts were disappointed to see that there were no changes to the zero emission bus mandate and no changes to the capital outlay exception projects. That's the $100,000 project that we can do each year. $100,000 gets you less and less as costs keep going up. So here's a lot of numbers that really are a review of our executive budget proposal. Thanks to our friends at ASBO New York. You can see that Peru is slated to receive the 2% due minimum increase in foundation aid. That's the top line here. Overall, we have some changes in our building aid and our BOSI's aid, which is a net of just over 1% total state aid. So the important part here, as I mentioned, is that we are slated to receive that 2% due minimum. However, this does mean that we now fall under those, that safe harmless provision. If this was not included in the proposal, we would be receiving the same amount of aid that we did the year before. Because based on the formula, we would receive less aid than 24-25. The big driving factors that cause this are declining enrollment as well as higher property values. So from the state's perspective, as our property values increase and our enrollment decreases, we look wealthier per student as a district than we do. The other thing, as I mentioned, is federal funding uncertainty. So in addition to the immigration policies that we discussed, there's also uncertainty at the federal level regarding education funding. And we felt it was important to let the board and the community know that, you know, the district receives $1.2 million plus each year in federal funding. So if this funding were to go away, that is a burden on our district's budget that we would have to determine how we would address. There's also meal subsidies provided for school lunch, breakfast, and snacks that are subsidized by the federal government. So as we talked about, we have a proposed budget theme each year. This year, our theme is planning for uncertainty as best we can. So next budget meeting, we'll have a little bit more information, some hopefully more formal revenues as well as a tax cap that we can discuss with the board. And so we'll, we'll get more into the budget workshops throughout the month of March, excuse me. So now I am going to go into the Fiscal Stress Monitoring System. This is a report that the Comptroller releases each year. It's basically an early warning system for schools that may be faced with financial distress in the future. It provides feedback to local officials and community members to basically look at how do we prioritize our needs and it serves as a comparison tool for other districts. So the Fiscal Stress Monitoring Report consists of two pieces, financial indicators and environmental indicators. I am pleased to share with you all that Peru has no designation in either category based on the 2024 fiscal year. You can see that our, our score has remained the same for the past three years. I did want to go into a little bit of these financial indicators here. So when we talk about unassigned fund balance, the legal limit is 4% of the following school year's budget. But in comparison to, as we're looking at a percentage of gross expenditures, when we look at us compared to other schools, we are really in line across the state and we actually are lower than other North Country schools. Also, when you look at total fund balance, as a percentage of gross expenditures, we are lower than the average. In terms of an operating surplus or deficit, if you recall, we had about an $83,000 surplus in the last school year. You can see that that is very low compared to other districts across the state. However, given all those factors, that still did not change our designation. We are not considered susceptible to fiscal stress in the eyes of the Comptroller at this time. But it is important to compare to other scores, we are close, but we are a little bit higher than the average. And then in terms of environmental indicators, again, we have no designation in this category and our score actually decreased for the 2024 school year, which is good news. The indicators here, we look at our economically disadvantaged students. We are a little bit lower in that category than the state averages. And then our student-to-teaching ratio, these bars are far apart, but we are very close to the average. And then our teacher turnover rate, this is great news. You can see that we are lower than the average and that was something that we had received points against us over last year that we, or two years ago, that we do not have points against us in this category. And then change in property values, as I mentioned, we are seeing increased property values and decline in enrollment. But this is something that's, you know, clearly happening across the state, but at a higher rate for our district possibly than some other North Country schools. And then another indicator is the budget vote approval. We have a, you know, we had a super majority, not that we needed one. We were, you know, two-thirds budget approval, but it is slightly lower than the average. And again, our environmental stress score is only five for last year, which is lower than the comparisons to districts. So thank you. Our next, as I mentioned, our next meeting will surround revenues and parameters for future budget.
Thanks Kara.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Okay, six reports and communications. Any questions from us going on A through K? Motion to accept review of questions and communications?
Motion.
Here's back to Mrs. Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? New business? Any discussion from A through K? Do I actually do C through K for this one? Oh, C through K? Okay. We have to do A. Wow, there, those are just A and B, okay, so we should move on. Okay, so we don't, yeah, just discussion, discussion, okay. So C through K? Any questions, discussion? Motion to move, move C through K?
Except A and B, I guess, so.
Very excited. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion here. Personnel, and we have A through I, with the addition to E of Allison Rosenbaum and a change in the rate for Amber Arnold. Discussion questions? A motion to approve personnel, A through H?
Motion.
Motion Mrs. Mitchell?
Sir.
That's Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion here. And we have Rosenbaum with us tonight, so welcome aboard, thank you. And we move on to nine, and we have to look at each one of those. Policy of N K, we got policy 101. So this is the second reading of that one for the equity inclusivity and diversity of education. Now the added to the district's revised, restated amendment, complete 000 series of board policies to be adopted January 14th. Any discussion on policy 0105? Okay. So a motion to accept the second reading?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion here. Okay, 7,000, 7,000 is the second reading for. All, all of that 7,000 series. Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Mrs. Boffo Davies? All in favor? And no opposed, motion here. And then we have our MOA for PAT, any questions, discussion now? Okay, motion to adopt the following resolution. Resolving Board of Education's反对 terms and conditions of memorandum of agreement with the Association of Teachers regarding appendix B musical aid and other activities. Authorize the Superintendent Schools to execute some MOA and take all actions necessary on behalf of the employer in perpetuating the terms of the MOA.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion here.
I think I have a calendar, I think we have a change in. Oh, in June, well that's because.
Remember last year this time? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, because that was New York, New York State.
There was an issue that was originally was on the New York State web, website when we were making the calendar when they were, we ended up correcting it. And I realized it was a, it was a regents exam that was not in earlier June, so it was. We didn't read it all, which was the only error in the, I hate essay, that's the only error.
Okay. What we changed on that?
It was, June 4th, there was a regents that was listed in the document. That was the. Yeah, the New York State. Most people got the newly revised 24-25 academic calendar.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Sir.
Second, Mrs. Boffo Davies, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion here. Okay. 9240.
That's just receiving information.
Getting. So we don't have 40, we have, just receiving the information. Okay, and then. On vacancies.
Oh.
Received the information related to policy 9240, procedures, protocols for candidates, selection, interview, recruiting, hiring, and all. And there was a listing of checks for somebody who would call to check their. Okay, student personal advices, received information related to this one? Still in the mix, you know, our governor. So the governor is something, plan to restrict smart phone usage in the state environment or distraction-free burning in the New York State. So I think we're still waiting for more information on that before.
Has there been any internal, like, I guess it's a proactiveness on this topic or?
Well, it would definitely be something we would have to place into our code of conduct, which would make some things change. As we talked about in the previous meetings, our middle school has done some things. So like we, in order for us to, in the elementary school, that's not something that they have on either. Would it be a change to the high school in this particular, with the current proposed legislation in regards to bell to bell? And what some of those things would really be in regards to how we will go about that. We will code call based, once we get down that road a bit further. So that'll definitely be something that the code of conduct, we're going to have our conversations about. We can definitely have conversations about it too. I think it's interesting because we got about $13 million, you know, that's not, that's not the work, unfortunately. So we'll have to be creative in regards to exactly how you're going to do that after a small school. You could have a specific location that they're going to put them in, but you can do it, be mindful. But the number of students in our high school and middle school, we may have to, we have to be practical about it too. So they may have to be in their lockers, but then we'd have to have the consequences for students who are not following those types of things. So those will all be part of the code of conduct that we'll have to address. So we'll kind of have to wait a little bit until we actually hear, is it definite? I did participate in a survey, a phone survey, and that as well as the state police actually checked as well, just trying to get our feeling on it as well. And one of the most important aspects of it too is we have to take into consideration the parents and where we're making sure that our students have an opportunity to be reached if they need to be, because their parents need to reach them. And then also students have that opportunity to use a school phone to be able to reach them as well. So reach their gaps.
How are students aware of this potential law, policy?
I would say it's definitely, they're talking, they're talking.
For sure. Are they, I mean, I'm sorry, go deeper into this, but are they aware of the distractions that cell phones provide? Is there, is there a consciousness with this particular topic in usage, yes?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Even within, in, in their hands.
Yeah.
They will tell you that it is certainly distracting, it buzzes in their pocket, they feel like they have to grab it. They'll admit to it, but they'll, on the other hand, they're saying, well, that's, that's what I've learned, that's what I do. So yes, it's interesting to have conversations with that.
Yeah. When you go out to other schools that have, have one, have more programs, they're saying, they haven't been really. Once decisions are made, it's not that hard for the students, students embrace it relatively. But I hear a lot of schools, it's like, oh, it's hard to work, it seems to be okay. So the end, I think we have to a little bit more than a minute, but it'll be something we'll have to. From what it sounds like, that gets a little too placed ready for the.
I don't want to be all Pollyanna about it, but I do appreciate if students are involved in this issue. If we ever survive, whatever.
Is there a way we can do an assembly, like, towards the end of the school year so that way they all have?
Well, I think, you know, for sure, I think one of the most important things, we're actually looking at some community involvement and components of this as well, sharing some of the research behind why, why it would be necessary to remove the phones. of the research behind why, why it would be necessary to bring in the phones, so we're in the, for the real stations, I'm hoping with that, but on the flip side, we don't want to do too much with the students until we know it is actually in effect too, and make everybody anxious about it.
That kind of leads to the next point, though, is if it's not put into effect, do we still put something into effect?
I think that that's a, that's a, that's a great conversation as well, but so, at the end, I think we, I do anticipate something in effect, I do, that's supposed to go through. I have no question about it, absolutely, but I'm pretty sure a lot of people are telling me that it's going to be true. At the end, I would say, what Karen's talking about, we're going to have a little bit more information as soon as, as soon as it's passed there, then we really have a lot of things to move forward.
So more information to come in. And then our architectural services agreement. Did we get numbers in there, or was it, I forgot, I want to...
They're, they're up in the seats on the, on the contract.
Oh, okay.
Have the fee schedule.
Oh, okay, I guess I missed, okay, thanks.
It's written out in words.
Yes, it was in words, yes.
So it's kind of hard to find.
Okay, I was looking for some numbers.
Really, the...
I was looking for numbers.
The fee for the architect is, is ten percent of the total construction cost associated with the project.
Okay, okay. So motion to approve and authorize the standard form of agreement between the owner and architect of the BCA Architects and Engineers within twenty-twenty-five capital approvals, project of roof replacement, approved by the voters on October seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, pending final review by this school attorney. Got motion? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, sales, Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carried. Anything would be, or comment? Follow-up, I don't think some of those have...
No, we didn't have anything more this, this month.
Nope. And then we have, that's it, we're nice, and ten, new business, School Board Association. That's the people who would like to go to the mayor's, Clinton County School Board Association annual recognition dinner. Well, I usually go with, you know, Mr. Harry, I guess, so just me? Okay, so motion to establish representation at the Thursday May first, Clinton County School Board Association, did we? Motion? Mitchell, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters, all in favor? I don't know, and usually Mr. Watanero goes with BOSI.
And if anyone needs, we have a little bit of time, so if anyone changes something, whatever, just put that back forward.
Okay. Uh, let me see, academic calendar. Motion to adopt twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar.
Yeah, so we, we've worked through our calendar. One of the areas that's different this year that, that we're proposing to you, you know, the fact that we have more questions about it, but we really have strug, half-days are struggling for us, there are struggles for us, and I do think that it's, in today's changing educational world, we need to have days for the work that we need to be doing in regards to, for everything from our standard, for our standards, learning program, we're looking at a new reading program in our elementary school, the fortune of a graduate, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but we definitely are struggling not only with our attendance of students, but it can be a staffing too, so we did, we think that in this kind of school year, we should have those, those half-days to run next, because it really, we think that it might benefit us to have that little extra time on, on the Wednesday, which we don't have on Friday. It's kind of went back and forth, you know, there's still a little bit where people are concerned about, you know, breaking up the day, or breaking up the week, but I think that it's a better place to pick up, and we need to try that, because if that, really, we don't see an improvement, we'll have to have a different conversation about some sort of year without having to go on these half-days.
Good, yeah, thank you.
We had talked years ago about, and I think you've just answered it, but it's the, it's two, like, instead of a half-day, it's a full day, but every two nights.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the state doesn't allow you to, so we, so they don't, it would make more sense, right? It would make more sense, we unfortunately can't do that, so you have to still get your full day. The reason we do a half-day is we, we receive credit for the day, and that's part of it, and then the others. So our next, in this particular calendar, you'll see in March, we have March tenth as a professional development day, that is, we will do an MOA with PAT, because it's going to be a regional professional development day across the entire Chamberlain Valley, all the schools will be working together to, to be a day for professional development, so everyone will be off that day, and doing professional development. One of the things we will have to work with PAT on for March next year will be a, what it looks like to provide the parent conferences for the elementary parents who are students who teachers feel the need of that conference, not everyone who's in during that time, but we will have to work through that with PAT, this, that's one area PAT is aware, we'll have to address next year.
And that, and the half-day, the rational, the half-day on the Wednesday versus Friday is, is attendance for the back of teams.
About ten of those students, we definitely see the percentage of the number of students coming to school too, we will always see that, right? But because it's Friday, I think that that will be part of what's going to happen, so not, not like, why go to school Friday?
Also, they've been adding on to all weekends.
Yeah.
So that's a little, like...
A little more incentive to check down early.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that.
And some of that worked very well during the hybrid school of year, with the Wednesday, was that, that different day, that was a good, that mid-week thing of catching up and meeting with students.
Also, the, there will be a revision, we're working with class first date to the emergency room, but just they haven't, they don't have to do that, so.
Yep, we're hoping to do it in March next year.
Okay. So motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar. Motion, Stephanie Oswald Davies, and the second was? Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor? No one opposed, motion carried. Okay, policy zero one, zero one, this is the first reading of sexual harassment grievances of channel nine. Any questions, discussion on that? And it's just a motion to do our first reading. Got a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Rivers. Uh, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carried. Twenty-two, forty-five is the ex officio student member of the board, and we have to have that in place this year, and we had talked about it before, and that's why we've brought on our, our student council with us, and in this policy, it was the president and vice president being the alternate, and that was pretty much was it.
Enough, we'll make sure that once this policy is, is adopted, we'll reach out to student council and have a conversation with them.
Right, because they were the one that...
They are, they are already, we'll see you, Grayson, even though she wasn't here, she spoke, she, yeah, her report to Matt, you can send an email to Grayson, and she is the fastest person to get back to you with her response now either, so.
Every email is a distraction.
That's right, so stop doing it in the middle of the day.
So we, we don't have to vote, the community doesn't vote, I guess, I think we talked about it on one course, that doesn't...
Before, we had to add a number.
Right.
We had to do a poll on the, the, because it's a requirement.
Now it's just a policy, and sure, and, and this, this is take place as soon as we, is that?
Yes, it has to be in place by July, to, until I want to...
Okay, so it's starting next, next year?
Right. Yes.
For Sep- for September?
Yes, so it starts July.
Or you started July.
July, September. Their ability to look at...
They could come to the meetings, they, you know, it would be nice for them to come to that first meeting where we do the reword, but they, they don't have to, so. Okay, so that's just a motion to conduct that first reading?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters? Second, second, Mrs. Mitchell? All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed. Okay, policy A one thirteen, this is the upper screening of the extreme heat condition days. Any questions, discussion on that?
It was back to last summer, or last year.
Was, many years, we've sat in lots of, lots of heated rooms. Any questions or anything on that? Okay, motion to conduct that first reading? Motion, Mrs. Graves? Second, second, Mr. Mitchell? All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carried. Well, facilities use request, this is from the IAABO, what, Mr. Moreno, what's that stand for now?
International Association of Approved Basketball Officials.
Yes, but they do a nice tournament on this weekend, and in the past, we have, with the amount of money we did not charge them for facility use, is that correct, Mrs. Mills?
Do you have, if you're in agreement with the same as last year, you have that actual motion?
Yes, I have, yes.
To do the same?
Yeah, the motion to waive the per event space area use fees, but not the custodial charges. They do a very nice job, and some of the scholarships come back. Any other questions?
We have been in contact with, with Mr. Moreno, he's concerned, he's on the, on the side, so, no, Sunday, Sunday, sorry.
No.
So we'll keep an eye on it.
Any other discussion? Okay, motion to waive the per event space area use fees, but not the custodial. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Second, Mrs. Blachowicz? All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carried. No public comment? Right? Oh, Brian?
And I'll sign in after, but...
I got you.
Look, just on behalf of IABO four to three, the Northeastern New York Board of Officials, I just want to say thank you very much. We're looking forward to this, about this weekend, and then, and next weekend is our younger group, the fourth, fifth, and sixth. Right now, we're, something new we're trying to share, I just want to share with you, not only are we having a boys' division like we've had in the past, we've added a girls' division, so we have six girls' teams coming in of seventh and eighth graders, and we're really excited to be doing that and offering that this year, so, again, over the past twenty years, we've given us sixty-three thousand dollars in scholarships, not to mention, you know, meals and stuff like that with some of those recipients, so, again, you know, I know it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, not, not a large fee for, for the schools, so we appreciate it very much, but for us, that's one scholarship, so.
That works, and our basketball players are signing up to do the books.
Yes, basketball...
So that's a nice, nice opportunity too.
Yeah, it also gives them a chance to see the game from a different perspective, you know, so, but we thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Peters? Second, Mr. Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carried, no one opposed.